Don't use them, you lose them.
It's 5:30, a call to order, the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency, first item on the agenda is to accept the minutes of the May 29 meeting, entertain a motion moved by Mr. Riggi, second by Councilmember, um, Porterfield, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand adopted. Meetings for 2013, first and third, Monday, every month.
Basically, just like to follow the city council's schedule so that we don't have to publish leave because we're going to probably be having a meeting every two weeks to transfer properties.
Good.
So I'd just like to set the schedule.
Entertain a motion to adopt a tentative schedule of meetings, moved by Councilmember Barazo, second, second by Mr. Erickson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adopted. Next items, resolution 2013-07, transferring a series of 12 properties to the City of Schenectady, entertain a motion to approve that. I should say to move that.
I'll move it.
Moved by Rucker, do I have a second? Porterfield, all in favor, transferring these properties to the City of Schenectady, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution adopted. Any business to come before the agency? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Move, seconded.
Second.
Stand adjourned.
Let me each have five and a half minutes for each of you to pull up.
Now, as I was preparing this project presentation, we wanted to do this first before we went to finance. Mr. Morris is here.
Yes.
Just thought I'd want to.
Oh, can I have a page one, please, Chuck?
Mr. Morris, you're up.
Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate the time, let's just go spend some minutes to talk about where we are with Open Stage Media, which is the public access side of the contract with both Fios, Verizon, and Time Warner. You guys made the decision to ask us to run it as of January of two and a half years ago. We very recently, two weeks ago, opened a new studio that we called the Digital Soapbox. We had a small one upstairs in our offices, we moved down to the street in that small retail space, about 250 square feet, that's just to the left of the entrances to the Carl Company that would lead to Apostrophe. It's completed in that it's functional, it's not completed yet in that we intend to put all three cable stations broadcasts on televisions that are in those windows. I actually could look and see both what's being recorded and what's being broadcast. As of about a month ago, we are webcasting two out of the three channels, the public access channel 16 and the education channel, channel 17, and January of next year we'll buy, we've budgeted to buy the equipment in order to webcast the government channel in addition. So at this point, two out of the three channels are available on the computer on live feeds. We also have downloads, video on demand for everything, including all the government meetings. We're recording per week between seven and 10 productions, shows at OSM in that digital soapbox, plus the Schenectady Today Show and a couple other shows that are in the larger studio that's in the lower level of Proctors where the green market goes downstairs. That's a pretty flexible little space, but smaller studio has been growing in access. We'd like more people to be able to use it, they need a little bit of training, we have a training program for contact, we'll train a lot of people so that they can learn how to use the equipment to record to themselves. We've also grown a small pool of producers who could be hired at, I think it's $20 an hour, in order to shoot and edit for people who don't want to learn or don't have a volunteer to learn the program for them. Our education program with OSM has grown remarkably. Every school district, to remind you, the tact that we took was that participating municipalities had to participate financially, so at this point, Miskiuna and Rotterdam are participants with the City of Schenectady. Glenville is not, nor is the Village of Scotia, their citizens are not able to drop off stuff for broadcasts in order to use our equipment. So it's just the two participants plus the main sponsor of Schenectady. We didn't do that with the school districts in Schenectady County, so every school district is eligible to bring materials, and we've been working with them extensively. As school districts have had budgetary issues like everybody else, often the media programs suffer, so you've not seen as much, if you watch the education channel, as much stuff on the education channel as we would have hoped, but we are looking to grow that by supporting those districts with media instruction. They have a full-time media person acts Schenectady, and I've been talking to two of the other school districts in the county about a similar arrangement. I would say we are a little slower than we would have liked to have been, but very close to what we imagined doing, and with television and video changing rapidly, I think we are pretty much caught up with the way the world looks at things. You can now watch our stuff on an iPhone, on an iPad, anywhere, and that's pretty cool. So a year from now, we'll be able to do that on all the channels. And that was all I wanted to tell you guys, and ask any questions.
Okay, questions? Thank you for the update.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and then to finance?
There are calls to finance meeting for, first item up, New York State Occupational Safety and Health Training Grant, Mr. Dino.
What you have before you is a legislative request for the city to enter into a grant. It has recently received an award of, a grant for the third year for the New York State Occupational Safety and Health Training Education Grant, it's a grant through the Department of Labor, and that award was for $24,314, $24,314. We received 100% of what we asked for, ratcheted down just a tad because the Department of Labor took into account all recipients and just prorated out everybody at 100%. So this will be the third, and we think the final year for this support.
Is there any match, you know, is it?
It's a reimbursement, and it's totally, it will, there's no budgetary impact whatsoever. Whatever we spend will come from this grant.
Any questions?
Just, um, could you just kind of tell me a little bit about what the safety compliance and ergonomics, can you just say a little bit about what the training will be?
Yes, in every year, it's a little different, encompasses workplace safety issues as well as ergonomics, and does touch a little bit on workplace violence, but it's just basically expanding on the same topics that have been raised throughout the training and getting us up to a level of compliance and education.
Thank you.
Any questions? Motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Peggy's not here.
Oh, Peggy's not here. So I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next one up, handling the multiple bids for houses, this is something that we kind of discovered last week at the council meeting when we have bids for houses, and then there's multiple competing bids, so I really just wanted to have a discussion and see if the mayor had some input and kind of ideas of how the process should be handled, make sure that, you know, that not only are we optimizing our return and, you know, not leaving money on the table, but that we're treating everybody fairly, and so wanted to kind of open a discussion, see if the mayor had any thoughts on how we will do things going forward, is, you know, is there any intent to change the process?
Well, the council's adopted a process, right, appointed a property disposition committee which represents the different departments, that makes a recommendation, screens the offers when it comes to city council, the prerogative is still with the city council. I think we're actually in a good position where there is more interest in properties than we have had in the past. I've got a number of realtors who are out there approaching some of Schenectady property differently than they had in the past, and so it's a little bit unusual, people are looking at something and looking to put more money on the table, and again, if the council wants to say, you know, done the internal review and recommendations, you want to shut it off on the Thursday when the committee agenda goes out, we can do that, or if you want to let bids come in, we will adopt it, whatever the circumstances may be.
I think, I mean, I'm all for having, you know, more bids, I think if you put yourself in the situation, you got, you know, an offer on a house, and then while you're contemplating whether you're going to accept the offer, another offer comes in, that's always a good thing for the seller. I think in this situation, you know, if the price, the offer price at the committee meeting is released or made public somehow, made public after the committee votes it, and then someone comes in between the committee and the council to, you know, counter, you know, up it by a dollar and try to kind of take it away, is that going to, who's best interested in it, you know, so is there, is it possible to keep the offer price confidential until the full council votes? And then you could continue to accept bids, but I think it's tough once somebody makes an offer, and then the world knows what the offer is, and then someone can come in the next day and bid a dollar more, it throws, I think, a disadvantage to the person, the initial person that comes in, so.
Well, then, you know, why don't we just look at having a policy that says this is the cutoff date, and, you know, the mayor gave the date the Thursday before, as opposed to, you know, getting bids the same day of where then we have to take a look at and make a decision. If we have a cutoff date, everyone knows what that is, and so that that rule applies universally, and that there's no having to come back and then renegotiate something, and then no one's going to feel, we would hope, that maybe they get outbid because someone needs information, there won't be their opportunity for that, because there'll be a cutoff date, and if your bid isn't in, then it won't be considered until there's another property that you want.
I don't know how we can keep some of this stuff confidential, you know, we made the internal recommendation in the council's agenda, so we're putting that out, I think at that point it pretty much becomes public information.
Yeah, and just to address your issue, or your thought, and I'm not arguing against it, but in the real world, a realtor, you know, let's say it's Thursday is the deadline, and a realtor on Saturday meets for the first time with a potential buyer, brings the person out, and they come in with an offer on Monday that's several thousand dollars more. There you don't have somebody who knew of the deadline, because the person, you know, there was no contemplated transaction before the Thursday, and I'm, and this is basically what I ran into last week where I felt an obligation to bring that offer to your attention, and if, and in theory, the flip side is that if you say after Thursday you're not going to consider any offers for the following week, if you have already passed the resolution authorizing the sale at a specific price, are you going to be upset with me for not telling you that if you pass that resolution, you're going to give up another offer that's several thousand dollars more?
Two things, and I agree with you, and the other piece is, we don't pass the resolution until Monday night.
Correct.
You know, the only thing we're doing right now is taking you out of committee, you know, one suggestion might be is to recess the claims committee in which we okay these, or whatever committee, if it's in CD and P or whatever, until the night of the council meeting, and then meet at 6:30, and if there are any other offers that come in, we entertain them at that point, but we do not, you know, make a full.
Vote it out of committee.
Vote it out of committee until that night, and it may not come up a lot, but at least we would allow ourselves that time, and it would also allow those individuals who don't have the time during the week, it could be on a Saturday, it could be on a Sunday, it could be a Monday morning, it's, you know, as you said before, it's a very good problem to have, but on the other hand, I think that, you know, we can make sure that we get ourselves here ten minutes earlier to entertain any other offer that would be in the best interest of the city and the taxpayers. So that would be my recommendation. When we have these homes that are up for approval, we adjourn claims, we adjourns DDP and wait till Monday night, and do with that.
That's a good thought.
That's for me.
Any thoughts on how that would work?
I do think we still need to have a specific time of day on Monday though, on that Monday, say, you know, they've got to be in by 3 o'clock or whatever, however much time you need to prepare the information for us at 6:30 or whatever, I still think, and then I think we really need to stick to that because it's, you know, in the interest of being fair.
Right. And there are properties that are coming forward, and again, without a clear recommendation from the property disposition committee, it's coming back to the council and saying, you know, should we go back and counter offer, what are your thoughts on this? So there are some that are more dynamic than others, and some that you think that you've got a firm offering, other people are expressing interest, and again, in the grand scheme of things, I think it's good for the city overall because tonight we're going to go through another group of houses, there's more in the pipeline, so it's happening, I mean, not as quick as we all would have liked to, but it's now coming together, and we entered it, will get us to where we want to be.
I only have one other comment, and that is, I, and I don't know how this will work with the proposed plan of action, but I think one thing that also needs to be considered is not, sometimes not always a thousand dollars or $2,000, but rather someone with a proven track record for successfully rehabbing houses and being responsible and, you know, wanting to live in the city and current on their taxes and, you know, those kinds of things too, so, you know, you come to the table and it's like, well, this person bid $8,000 and this person bid $10,000, well, of course, we want the $10,000 bid, well, maybe it's not worth it.
If the higher.
If it's not the right person, so, and I don't know what that looks like if we're having, you know, a bid in the 11th hour and it was all.
It would look like a checklist off the bid, you know.
We are trying to do that to.
Yes, now.
Do some evaluation of, again, who may have stronger financial and just a stronger skill set to be able to go in, take whatever the property is, and convert it back to something that, you know, it's on the tax rolls, it's livable, and something we're all proud of. And that may mean that we don't necessarily take the highest offer.
Right.
It's just one of the criteria that's evaluated, you know, there's multiple things we need to evaluate.
Going on what Ms. Barazo said, I guess I have another question then, so if someone comes in over the weekend, how do we do this checklist and make sure that it's done in time for a Monday night meeting?
You know, we're trying to go through that, and, you know, everyone, there's different variables, so that we'll try and get all those things in place so that we have that information to make the decision on the Monday.
And so if it's not, does that mean we won't take it on the agenda, we wait until we get it?
That's the sole priority of the council.
That is, and I agree with you, and I don't think we should, if it's not there, then we shouldn't do it, so we've put it off for two weeks.
We could always, you know, put it off for two weeks, you know, if we feel that there's more activity, right?
We adjourn the council meeting and do it the following Monday.
So we've got a couple options, the board, I think, just to end of the day, it's good that we're talking about it to make sure that, you know, we make sure that any, you know, nothing's to be perfectly smooth, this is kind of an unorthodox process, but we want to make all our efforts to make sure it's there.
And I think that's extremely important, that we make sure that people see it as being a fair process and not weighted in one person or another person's favor, you know.
I got my own personal thought, which you don't have to pay any attention to, but meeting every week, you know, half an hour before the regular meeting, I think is a great idea. In the world, in the real world, the realtors are out there very aggressively working, and if we can shave two weeks off the process by having that meeting every Monday night, that would be wonderful for our dealings with them.
I just have one more question, and it's probably for Mary. At what point in the process, Mary, are we being unfair to the buyer in entertaining other offers?
Once you have accepted in your, this meeting here, I think prior to that, we accepted the offer.
We don't accept the offer until the night of the council meeting.
Okay, yes, I understand.
It moves out of committee, but in essence, it's not accepted until we vote on it.
So what I'm gathering from what you're saying is that you're going to collect all the offers and then be a half hour early before your council meeting to make a decision?
To move it out of committee.
Based on the recommendations, obviously, of the city, who's presenting these offers to us.
The dissection committee.
So if you have the, so I think what would be, once that, once you do accept an offer in your council meeting, any other offers legally can come in until they're signed, until the attorney approval is signed. So once the attorney approval is signed, no other offers can come in, and I think that if you're going to do that, I think if that's done immediately and the mayor signs the offer, and John signs the attorney approval, that deal is sealed and you're being fair to, that's where I see the fairness coming in.
So from a real estate point of view, you think this plan of action is a good one?
I think it's a great one.
Okay.
And I understand that the listing agent, any of those listing agents, when they know the date of when those offers are coming in, they, but an offer has to come in first, so if subsequent offers come in, they can say, if you're going to bring in an offer, you need to bring it in by this date or it will not be accepted, and that's the way it is, but the listing agent will have control over that, and they need to inform of what your decision is as far as John and that's where it will be.
Thank you.
Any other discussions, thoughts, ideas?
Now I'm a little more confused, but, so are you saying when the attorney and the mayor sign it, not necessarily the same night that we prove it at council?
I would say that that should happen as soon as possible after you make a decision, because then legally, any other offer can come in, and if you want to finalize an offer, that's the best way to do it.
Well, I mean, I think John Paul, if it's attorney approval, he would sign it after the council meeting, the full council votes, I mean, the problem is, the committee votes, but it's only the three people that are on the committee that actually are voting out of committee, and then the full council votes a week later.
Right.
So if we adjourn the committee meeting till right before the full council vote, that gap where more things can come in is limited to an hour, right?
And what I can do is, if there are multiple proposals, I can have a resolution for each proposal, and then one that's accepted is the one that gets passed, the others are torn up, and the general procedure is you would vote, and then Chuck has to do his ministerial stuff on Tuesday morning to be signed by the mayor, and then three minutes later, the contract's going to be signed by both of us, so we took wrap up everything Tuesday morning following your Monday night, passing of the resolution.
Good.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, yeah, so this is then going forward because we have a situation currently, so, I mean, and I don't know if that's something you want to discuss now, or does it from here forward?
We should be discussing it.
Yeah, I mean, I think anything with current contractual, you know, negotiations, I think
we can't talk in public, because we'd disclose the information to put somebody in as an example, but I think, I mean, we'll see what that is later when we go into the session, but I think it's definitely something we should consider as we move forward. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Or adjourned?
John Paul has to stay because he's here.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, a call to order administrative efficiency. Marion Porterfield, call on.
Yes, Mr. Winkler is here. November 2011, Mr. Winkler came to the council and talked about the call intake form that was going to be done, where every call would get an ID number, we'd keep track of incoming calls, who took them, and then what the ultimate end result was, and it was going to somehow be tied in with the MUNIS software, so I was asking basically for an update on that so that when people, you know, where we are with that and how we're moving forward, if there's a timeline and what that timeline looks like.
A year ago, I stopped work on it, Juan was working with me, because I found out that the MUNIS system was going to have that capability, and we did not want two systems to fit in. I don't know the exact status of the MUNIS system, but I know we've got an update, do you have that information?
Yeah, I can tell you that the city is currently moving to the most recent version that it can from MUNIS that will allow us to potentially look at my, only that's called the border module, and it allows the city to track, to create track border orders and online requests and complaints. Just starting to look at it now, not sure exactly if it's aggressive or not, what you're talking about, I think it is, it's more from the perspective of tracking border orders through various departments of the city, but it is also described to be able to take care of complaints. The thing about this, though, is it would be the same thing that Mr. Winkler was referring to, it's only as good as if somebody gets a call, that they needly go in and log it. So we should, in a couple of weeks, be able to look at this a little bit closer, this component does come with a process for other sides of this one, I'm not sure if it's where we want to go.
Compared to, it just becomes Myanmar, it's really three people that are assigned IT, John Colucci is one of them, who does a multiple tasks, traffic signals, design shop, other things, and so it comes, how do you prioritize things, how do you balance it? We are looking at it, trying to kind of chip away at the edges, but at this point, it's not a top priority, the money just isn't there to do it, there's just other issues and bigger things that we have to work on.
So, and, you know, in the absence of this, is there like some other process besides, or just calling the mayor's office?
That's what people do.
Well, um.
But is there an underlying problem?
Well, is there an underlying problem? Yeah, people say that they're getting calling, you know, and not getting response to their, to their call, so.
Then they're calling the mayor's office and we'll follow up.
Well, if there was a process, then it's easy to tell people, here's the process, you call here, there's the form, and, you know, then, you know, it would be more beneficial probably to us in terms of, you know, the feedback and to the person that's calling as well, so. And I knew that this was on the table, so I wanted to know where we were with it, so I can tell people, here's where we are with it.
We try and do the best we can, at least, like now, we're getting a lot of calls coming in where people want the grass cut, and two things, one is staffing level, and the other is the weather, so they're calling in, it's, we want to do it, but to have the manpower and have the weather cooperate, it just isn't happening well as anybody would like, and so people think their calls aren't being answered. It doesn't mean that we don't want to do it and we're not aware of it, it's, again, what I'll call that fine balancing act.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn, second?
It's Marion and Vince.
Oh, Marion and Vince.
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll take.
Move to adjourn, give a second.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Okay, I'll call to order city development and planning, accept properties from Sura.
This is the other side of the transaction, same to all properties, accept them so that the city can then sell them, to be either approved or will, may approve for sales tonight in executive session.
So, the motion for?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Nykirk resolution, Mr. Mayor McCarthy.
Nykirk is celebrating its 600th anniversary this year, there is a ceremony at the end of this month, we're going folks connecting to Nykirk, just looking for a ceremonial resolution behalf of the council, acknowledging the long history between the two cities.
Great. Great. Motion, all in. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And I'm looking for a ceremonial resolution, just in appreciation of the uni college students that did the Before I Die Board. It's taking off on Facebook and it really is wonderful. I mean, the other day there was Before I Die, I Want to Meet Steve Urkel, Before I Die. Just saw all these really random and then wonderful things like I want to buy a house for my children and I to live in. And it's just, it was, I have seen absolutely no, nothing negative on it. It's just really, it's, it's a very, it's a very neat project. So I would just like to, you know, the very uni college senior that really spearheaded the entire thing and saw it all the way through and she worked for months and months. So.
I'll move it.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. DSIC Cricket, Ms. Porterfield.
Yes, I wanted to bring up, we got some correspondence from the folks who play cricket at, or assigned to play cricket at, thank you, at the Ground Park Field. And basically that there wasn't enough room to play in that field. And we're looking for opportunities to play in other fields, specifically requesting Central Park and Mount Pleasant. And I thought that somebody would be here from OGS, but they were told that those, that opportunity wasn't available because of previous problems. And so we received an email saying, you know, we addressed these previous problems and here's how we, how we'd like to rectify that because we don't have enough room to play in just Ground Park because of the number of teams that there are and the number of organizations who are sharing that park, which is three. So, you know, I'm bringing this back for discussion to see if there's something we can do to accommodate, even if it's on a probationary period where we say, well, you know, you have to meet all the conditions, whatever those conditions are. And should those conditions not be met, then you can no longer play in these parks. You know, it's, I think that there's actually, you know, cricket, it's a pretty good sport. It's an international sport. And I don't know if there's any other cities in the capital region that could say that, hey, we have cricket teams here. And so.
It's a large.
So, I beg your pardon?
Yeah, I said such a large group of people.
Yeah. And so, you know, it's really a selling point for the city. And maybe it needs some tweaking and some, and some things worked out.
Again, the council has designated Ground Park as primary field. Thought everybody was working together. There has been less than optimal negotiations there. I still haven't looked at the general outline in terms of how many fields they can get on the site at Ground Park. Said that we would make some of the city crews available to help facilitate the layout of additional cricket fields. Again, if the site works there, we've been backed up, you know, with tornado, weather, other things. Wanted to clear that tree line along Altamont Avenue, not Altamont, at Hamburg Street, get the site cleaned up again so that we have higher utilization. Problem Central Park is really not being scheduled for softball. So that, so that space is not available. We have problems with the A diamond where there's deteriorated point where it's really hazardous. We have liability issues on that field to play. So again, it becomes this balancing act of trying to get everybody scheduled, get them in there. And when we did this last summer, really thought that Ground Park was going to be the center of the cricket activity here in the community.
And I think, John, did you want to speak to that at all? I think that was the idea, but as they, after they got there, they realized that there's just not enough room for everyone in all the games that are to play.
That's true, because what happened earlier, playing hardball, when the hardball's playing, they can utilize a field for any other activities because of the hardball, it's dangerous to be on the field playing other games. There's only given a total field for softball at any given time. And every Sunday, hardball is being utilized on the field. And that's the reason why they're asking to completely use Central Park and Mount Pleasant for softball.
Sorry?
Yes.
So to me, it sounds, it sounds like, sorry. I mean, if it's hardball, takes up a larger space than softball, right? I mean, just in terms of overlapping utilization, right? So there's the other places that had been utilized in the past, are there other people using that now? Other groups using that? Or is it still available?
Central Park, Central Park is being, has been scheduled for softball and other games.
Baseball, softball, not correct.
Correct. And that, and the other thing is, my understanding of the Mount Pleasant field, I'm not quite sure what is the city's and what is actually the school district. There's a line there. It's never really been clearly delineated where they play.
My thought is if it's Mount Pleasant, if there's a question of where the line is, we should be able to give approval to at least use our half, you know, whatever part is ours, we've got approval. If they need to get approval from the school to use the other half, then so be it. But I mean, for us to block anybody from our half, that I think is, you know, not necessarily good for the citizens who want to utilize it. And I think that in terms of Central Park, you get two different organizations who want the same piece of real estate. How do we decide who gets it and who doesn't? And so that's another concern of mine.
But so it's managing, it's managing that site where, again, some of the council members were more directly involved in negotiations that where they were going to work among themselves in terms of the scheduling. That level of camaraderie, it seems to have dissipated. And you don't have some of the inherent flexibility that you might have to, again, get the utilization up at that field and have the activities where more of the infrastructure to support a cricket facility is there. And to make it work on the one field as opposed to diluting it, putting it in several sites where you could have really a first-class operation with Ground Park. It's not going to happen over one year, but as you build it, you get that, that really becomes a regional draw.
Right. I think moving them all to Ground Park before the park is ready to handle such a large number of people, maybe is not necessarily the right strategy. I mean, I think eventually if we got the land, you could lay out, you know, I think on a given Saturday, there's probably five people that want, five different teams that want to play at the same time. And so if you could fit three of them in Ground Park with modification, great, but there's still more people. So I think we need to have a lottery system for the Central Park and the Mount Pleasant areas and allow, first of all, allow them to play at Mount Pleasant, at least on the property that we own. And if they can squeeze in there and play it, great. And at Central Park, I think it needs to be a lottery system. We got to keep it fair. And to say that, no, you can't, and then say yes to some other group, I don't necessarily.
We may be able to work on, Jeremy's not here, the, maybe we'll do that on Mount Pleasant. I'm not sure you're going to have the option in Central Park.
All right. So that'd be good. I mean, if we can figure out a way to get Mount Pleasant back up and running, I think we have some happier people.
Yeah, I feel pretty strongly about it too. You know, it's, it's a, it's a positive thing. It's a good thing. It's a bonding thing. And if we have the provision to add some space so that more people can play, I think we should do that, you know? And I, you know, see, I don't kind of, I don't remember the Ground Park conversation quite the same. I know that we said, yes, utilize Ground Park. They were going to make the, they were going to make the improvements. They were going to open it up to anyone's use and all that. But I didn't think that was at the demise of the other wickets.
Yeah. I kind of followed the same.
Right. So, and I'm not sure they understood that either. So if we have space in Mount Pleasant that's not being utilized, that we could add one or two wickets to. If we can't do Central Park, well, everybody's got to compromise here. You know what I mean? Because we have, we have other sports that like to be played too. But right now, I think they are really landlocked. And I think that their, their requests are reasonable and I'd like to at least meet them partway. And I would also like to take note of their agreement and what they're willing to do for us to expand the amount of cricket sets played in the city. And I think that that's an important part too. Because I know, and I said this at the council meeting, I fielded complaints for loud music and smoking and profanity and different things, which comes with a group of people getting together, especially in a competitive situation. So, you know, I think that part of it needs to be taken into consideration too. And I think, you know, maybe the Mount Pleasant is on a, you know, a temporary basis and we see how it goes and if everybody lives up to their part, which is fair from the other side.
Yeah, I would say so too. Can you take a look at if there were any complaints that came in? Because there were a lot of complaints last year. That's really the bottom line of this whole thing. So if the association is willing to take those complaints seriously, there shouldn't be a problem. And if they're not taking them seriously, then it's not going to work and will at least now.
And they did address those complaints in their, in their correspondence to us.
They may have addressed them in their correspondence, but when you get out there playing is really when the neighbors have issues and some of the things that are going on. And that's really the crux of the whole matter was the residents that lived around the playing area of Mount Pleasant were disturbed by some of the things that were going on. And, you know, they have a right to voice their opinion as well.
Absolutely. And the association has a right to approve. So.
Sure.
You know?
Learning, learning from everybody.
Yep.
Okay.
So, and your question, so with, with the Ground Park, so that contract is all signed and sealed delivered? So that's.
No, we're still, we have final draft waiting for them to sign it. I understand what they've agreed. The end of last year, the first part of this year, the version, and then it got bogged down. And so the contract is not.
Okay. I'm Frank. Still waiting for the group?
To the best of my knowledge, I think it was Carl that gave you the last version. And I'm under the impression that we're waiting for the response, but I will check on that.
Maybe we could follow, if somebody could just call them and say, we're waiting for your signature. Because the conversations I've had, granted, not with every participant, but it didn't sound like they knew they were being waited on. I think they would have signed. So maybe there's a communication gap and you figure that out. That's an easy solution.
Mr. Reddick?
I guess my only concern is who, if this goes into a probationary period, because as Mrs. Booker brought out, there was problems there. Those people on Norwood and Pennsylvania Avenue were not happy. So who's going to have the final say when all's said and done? Is this going to be a 30-day interim or a two-month interim period? And then a decision will be made? Or who's going to have the say on it? Is it going to be the council? Is it going to be Parks Department, the mayor? I mean, we could say that it'll be a probationary period, but at the end of the probationary period, then we look at, if there was any complaints, if they were addressed or not.
Last year, we had gone to a point where it was week to week, where some of the performance was, in my mind, not acceptable. In fact, we tolerated more than we probably should.
Because I understand flag football is not allowed anymore because of the problems they have. That's what I'm standing. So there's issues there. Naturally, we have to be sensitive to the neighborhood. There are people that are living there. So they should have some kind of.
And it's, and it's other people that are using the park instead of the city.
Right. So as long as it's under control, they have a thing to grieve their problems to, or a board to grieve their problems to, see how it goes.
I'm not sure to me by a board to grieve their problems. Most of it comes up and I've got to decide.
Well, then you're the board. That's my question. Who's going to make the decision? That's my question.
Absent the council taking some directive, it's like anything else. It's.
Well, the directive is we get the phone calls with the complaints. Then we forward those to you.
It's, myself, it's the command staff in the police department or the fire department who's dealing with an incident that is, you know, somebody's engaged in behavior that's just unacceptable.
How about this? We keep the lines of communication open and we talk about it.
All the calls are coming in anyhow because we don't have the call log.
Right, that's right. If we're experiencing calls, then it goes on the agenda and we discuss it. You know, no matter who's experiencing the calls. Get it on the agenda and we discuss it.
Great.
Mr. Erickson?
No, I think that's a good way to wrap it up.
Okay, very good. And I understand this last item is for executive session, so I ask for a motion to recess city development and planning.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Call to order health and recreation. Proctors open container waiver. So let's see, it's in your package. Proctors is going to be hosting a bear truck on the corner of State and J on July 19. And then also they're going to have the circus July 18th and 21st. And will also be hosting a bear truck and is asking for the open container waiver so that they're allowed to host those trucks.
I'll move.
I need a second. Mr. Reddick?
I'm sorry, second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come before health and rec?
I'll move, adjourn.
Second.
I do have one, yeah. This is actually for Mr. Bolster. I get a call from your office, actually, for the, for the Dog Park Committee. Did we make a decision at the last meeting whether we're going to go with TNA, trust, trust?
Trust and agency.
Trust and agency for the committee and, you know, we're.
I thought they were supposed to come back to us.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything back, so I will check on that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'll understand next to.
I'll move.
We adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
Hey, call to order public safety, Chief Del Rocco. There's a resolution for Chief Doherty.
Thank you. This is basically ceremonial resolution as well. Mayor McCarthy received notification from the National Fire Academy of Deputy Chief Doherty's completion of the Executive Fire Officer Program at the National Fire Academy. This is a very prestigious accomplishment. Deputy Chief Doherty will be the first firefighter in the Connecticut Fire Department to have completed this program. It sets a fine example for our younger firefighters. And there's a great deal in the fires, a discussion in the fire service today about higher education and leadership training for our fire officers and firefighters as they proceed through the ranks. So as I said, this sets a very good example. And so I'm just requesting a resolution for council to recognize Deputy Chief Doherty's efforts and accomplishments.
I'd be proud to.
Okay, it's removed and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to present to him the actual certificate at that council meeting.
Sure.
As opposed to get into a less formal setting.
Great. Okay. If there's nothing else to come before public safety, move, adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Call to order public service and utility, water department supplies, Mr. DePomm.
Evening. So legislation proposed tonight is for the requirement of supplies and equipment we purchase every year for the running department. It includes any working valves, couplings, clamps, everything in the main distribution system, including hydrants that we replace on an annual basis, either from traffic accidents or just based on age. And some of the older ones that just don't have parts for that we have standardized with different breakaway hydrant. It's annual, we do it every year. There are four bidders. We award based on low price for particular items. So out of the four bidders, they're all going to get something, but it was based on price and the manufacturer. So everybody has a little bit of something that they were lower priced with and that's how we avoid it. It went through bid net and a number of people who looked at it in bid net, the four major suppliers bid on the items. Four bidders.
Yeah, I do have one question. Is this, is drinking water as well as?
This is all drinking water. This is for the distribution system.
I know that in January 2014, there's, there's supposed to be a change in the amount of lead that they can have in there.
This is all we suspect for knowing. They had to provide us with a document that they had to need to know the requirement. This stuff will go on the shelf. We are, we are allowed to use some of the lead products. I think it's till June, but after that. I think it's till June, but after that, that's the, that can't be used any longer, so anything we have coming in this order is lead.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I guess, how much does that add to the cost? Or not that, there's, I think, does it add a lot to the cost? Because I go to the plumbing store now, and you buy lead free.
Yeah, it does add a little bit more to the cost, because everything is now lead free. The valves will be put in the ground, give you no ton of lead in them, and again, now you're through, you know, homeowners, anything you use now?
Yeah.
Lead free, completely lead free.
Is it stainless? Or what?
No, it's just lead free. You get lead free, there's lead in a lot of different homes, there's some lead in the suburbs, there's lead in the cider you use, but the goal is to be completely lead free by January 14th is what, is what comes to it.
I'll move.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before Public Service and Utilities?
Sub move, you adjourn.
Need a second? Mr. Egan?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
A call to Order Government Operations. Not sure if this first item needs to be in executive session or not, but, you know, we've been having some feedback on the, at the council meetings about the lot located at 108 Brandi One Avenue, and the council really isn't familiar with what's going on there, what type of discussions have been had about the utilization of it, if there have been any bids, you know, we haven't, nothing has come before the council. So because it's a bid, I don't know if that's negotiations that needs to go into executive session, but I do think we need to know the current activity with regard to that lot and what the thought process of the city is.
If you're going to be discussing potential contract negotiations, it should be in executive session.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Erickson?
I guess, outside of any contracts or offers to buy, you know, in my opinion, that, you know, the city should offer the lot to, you know, the organization who is using its parking, under a condition that they maintain the facility of the property, and whether it's a rent, or whether it's an agreement, or, you know, I'm open to things, but I think there is a religious institution nearby that uses it, it would be beneficial, help them just in the street, and I think that if we could open it to them, at least until we figure out what we're doing here. It's not a guarantee that the lot's going to be available forever, it's not a guarantee, you know, it's not a guarantee past, you know, the next day, but I think since it's there and available to keep it blocked off, my opinion is poor taste if, if the organization's willing to make sure that it's returned in good condition, clean condition after they use, so.
And if we have to have something towed out of there, we make additional revenue, potentially if the towing fees are up, right? Yes, Mr. Porterfield?
Yeah, in addition, I agree with that. In addition to that, just for, you know, for information's sake, the, the Muslim faith is getting into Ramadan pretty soon, which means a lot of people will be coming to the mosque, and so there's going to be a lot of parking in the neighborhood, and we know that when there's a lot of parking in the neighborhood, sometimes we get complaints from the neighbors, because you used my parking space, all, all kinds of things. So I, I agree that we should, you know, take a look at doing that, and that would solve a couple of concerns even before they happened, so.
So do we need to do anything official, or do we just ask the administration to open the gate, or was there...
You're getting to the point where you're talking contract negotiations.
Right now.
It should be in executive session.
I would assume that there's some liability things that Mr. Poulster would want to make us aware of. I, I think, you know, I, I, I agree that that seems like a logical way to go, but we'll, this will learn the city's portion of it in executive session, so. Call for Public Hearing Management Benefits. Mr. Calatico is not here, Mayor?
The, we'll call the pattern contract that the council probably entered into with 1037, we would like to do that with management. Some of the management benefits reference the CSEA contract. So what I'm looking to do is break that away from the CSEA, and go back to a management package that is separate, distinct, and really reflects the agreement that we entered into with 1037, so that we could move forward with the management employees, with those terms and conditions, generally potentially discussed before.
So the management package would mirror what we've asked our unions to agree to, though?
What 1037 has agreed to and what we are still negotiating with the other unions to agree to.
Okay.
CSEA has not agreed to it, and I think there's another session scheduled tomorrow morning.
So I think a level playing field is very fair here. Mr. Erickson, did you have a question?
Yeah. So, I mean, is, will it, going forward, will it be tied to the other union, or will it be more of, you know, we're just going to state what it is and...
It'd be more, it'd be separate.
Separate. So it won't, it won't be tied to, going forward, just tying it here and then tying it here?
Right now, it references the CSEA agreement, that we go back to, relates to Sol Marra in the city council.
Okay. And would this be all management or just certain management? I think, I know we, it was a year or two ago, we talked about, I think, police and fire management being different than...
This is referring to non-public safety management.
Okay. Is there a reason we wouldn't tie public safety into it, or...
Do that except some of it is now referenced in the other agreements with police and fire.
And the attention at this point is we are not to bring them into the fold of the rest of management?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, today, I'm looking for a motion...
It's not my proposal at this point, something that I'll look at, I mean, look at.
Do you think it would be problematic to have two different tiers of management at this point? I mean, some managers will have one set of benefits, and another manager will have a different set of benefits? I mean, it is, so, I mean, to me, it would seem it's the nature of negotiations in New York State, where you have binding arbitration as a component of public safety negotiations. You are going to have a separate set of benefits that apply to those employees covered by that. Those that are not probably have, again, a different set of benefits, which they do now. They're all covered under binding arbitration?
No. Police and fire are covered under binding arbitration.
Management is too.
Everybody else. The command staff in the police and fire department are reflected in those contracts that are put in place for their subordinate employees.
Chief and deputy chiefs and assistant chiefs and commissioners, they're not, though, right?
Commissioners of exception, but the chiefs...
Chief is.
Right.
Okay. I thought, I thought we did something a year or two ago.
Well, we did, we did change some of that, but brought it back in. In the fire department, you have one employee, chief. Deputy chiefs there are covered. Fire, or the police department, the assistant chiefs, and the chief are not, they're managerial employees. We took and shifted that so that they weren't getting the huge payouts, adjusted some of the salary, so again, the salary reflected the rank, we had that salary compression where the subordinates were getting pay raises, the manager wasn't, so that the incentive to become a command officer just was not there.
And this is a call for public hearing anyway, so this just don't, for public hearing.
Because it's changing the program.
Would we have the published, what the terms of...
Proposed contract, proposal?
Yes. I thought Mr. Calatico was going to have that, and he didn't. This is the call for the public hearing.
We got time to get it.
To do that, and again, it's somewhat of a dynamic process where we have, I believe, tomorrow night, another negotiating session with CSEA. They miraculously agree everything tomorrow, and make this whole thing...
I'm sure they will, a little more, I'm sure they will. Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to call for a public hearing for management. Second?
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. And fee for public assembly inspections, Mr. Salamone.
I've got handouts, I apologize for this being late. In the packet, you have the legislative request, which has most of the specifics in it, but I'm giving you legislation now that's actually, which is clear.
Thank you.
So, we had a public hearing last week, and I, I had come to a couple weeks ago to discuss this, that currently, based on regulations put out by the New York State Department of State, as well as as part of the building code of the state of New York, the city of Schenectady is required to make certain public assembly inspections. And basically, the city of Schenectady is required to inspect every place where the public may assemble, which is restaurants, bars, stores, movie theaters, proctors, every year. And the city of Schenectady is required to inspect motels, hotels, and the like every three years. Currently, the city of Schenectady is not charged for these inspections, and many municipalities throughout the state of New York do. With speaking with Eric Schilling, it's come to our attention that one of our code enforcement officers spends up to a third of the year doing nothing but these inspections, which is obviously quite costly to the city. So we've, we've made a proposal to begin charging a fee for these services, and that's what you guys held a public hearing on last week, I don't believe anyone spoke on it. And just real quick, going to dilute the legislation, the first part just discusses where the regulations come from, from the state that mandate we do this. Second chapter says that, you know, the code for, the building inspector has to designate, that's supposed to be building code enforcement officer, I apologize for the typo, that it's someone that's qualified to do the inspections, that the inspections will be done according to New York State regulations, that will provide a certificate of inspection every year, and then it lays out the fees. And the fees for buildings up to 2,500 square feet and occupancy of less than 20 people is $75. A building less, at least 2,500 square feet but less than or equal to 10,000 square feet, or occupancy of at least 20 but less than 250 people is $125. And for buildings greater than 10,000 square feet, or an occupancy greater than 250 people is $250. And that last one is, is much different than what most municipalities do. What most municipalities do is they say that that greater becomes the, you know, a higher fee than the previous, you know, level on the scale, plus some fee for every square foot above that. And that obviously would get quite expensive for, you know, boat high or, or proctors, or even some of the hotels. So we're not doing that, we're obviously, we're not, we're not, and we cannot, you know, seek to make money on this. This is solely for, you know, what the cost of this service provided is, you know, it's another unfunded mandate right by the state, and we have to do something to, you know, to pay for, to offset that. So do you guys have any questions?
Questions, Mr. Erickson?
So on the different, three different sizes, or, you know, associated online, do we have any estimates of, you know, quantities that we currently do? How many of small, medium, larges are there?
Well, I believe Eric has, has an outline, but what I can tell you is from a, you know, I'm not sure if this is sufficient to you, but, you know, high, you know, going from as high levels possible, I play that this year, if this funding was, if this charge was in place, it would have been somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 to the city.
Mr. Porterfield?
And this, same question asking for you, is this included churches and religious organizations?
It does. It does, and most, most municipalities throughout, all municipalities that charge, they have to charge. This isn't a tax where you have a tax exemption, this would be similar to water, sewer, the types of fees that a tax exemption does not apply to. So, you know, so that's how that, that works.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
So if it's $15,000, I still isn't paid for three quarters of a year of employment?
It's one-third.
One, oh, one-third.
One-third.
So that's one-third of his pay.
You know, whether it actually, at the end of the day, when you compute out what his benefits are, you know, I mean, whether it's exactly one-third, if it's exactly one-third it's nine, it's a, it's a lot of different periods of growth right now.
Sounds good.
But, I mean, and the other side is, obviously, you know, we wanted to, we wanted to do something to, to offset our cost, but we also don't want to be, you know, periods of ridiculous type fee.
Right. I think this seemed to be within normal reason, but, okay. Thank you.
So I look for a motion to accept this?
Sub move.
Okay, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. If there's nothing else to come before Government Operations, I'll ask for a motion to recess.
Just a quick note, the other goal becomes reducing insurance costs. We do these inspections, we've had some very serious fires here in the community, but we'll be more aggressive, hopefully we can put some of that behind us, and over the long term, we'll reduce the incidence of event, and people will see their homeowners' perusal insurance rates decline. That doesn't happen quickly, but again, it's a long-term trend, and we're laying the groundwork for those things that happen, both in the housing stock and the perusal process.
I'll move, we recess.
Resess.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We recessed.
Okay, call to Order Claims. We'll discuss the two recessed committees and everything on claims, it's all executive session, Mr. Poulster, as this, a motion to move in executive session?
Sub move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.